UBSUDDO.LIVE's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
... case, application 24-07-003. This is a public participation hearing to take public comment on Cal Waters' general rate case for years 2026, 2027, and 2028. A general rate case is commonly referred to as a GRC, and in these types of cases, the California Public Utilities Commission takes a thorough look at a water utilities forecast of operations for the next three years. The commission looks at capital additions, operating expenses, other costs like labor, pension, and benefits, and taxes, as well as many other activities necessary to provide safe and reliable water service. In this application, Cal Water requests increased rates, I'm sorry, they request the authorization from the Public Utilities Commission in order for them to be able to increase rates for water service. Specifically, they want authority to increase rates by 17.1% in test year 2026, to increase rates on January 1st, 2027 by 7.7%, and to increase rates on January 1st, 2028 by 8.1%. To those listening that wish to speak, please call the number on the screen. That is 1-800-857-1917. Enter passcode 6032788 pound and press *1 to alert the operator that you want to speak. Please state your name, spell your name, and it is very helpful if you can also identify the service area you are calling about. If you are an elected official, in addition to stating your name, please provide your specific position or title. For those of you who are listening and are not certain at this time whether you may wish to speak, you don't have to decide now. You may decide to speak at a later time, but there is a moment later this evening where I will ask you to please indicate whether you want to speak. It's important for us to be able to get a general sense of how many potential speakers are in the queue so we can allocate time limits accordingly. If you don't indicate that you want to speak, and we've already set a time limit for speakers, and later on you do join us, we may have to reduce the time limit for any additional speakers who join after the fact. The purpose of this public participation hearing is to hear directly from the public about Cal Waters' general rate case. During most of these hearings, in these proceedings, the commission hears from the parties through official filings, through comments made on the record during duly noticed hearings, but this public participation hearing is the commission's opportunity to hear directly from you, from members of the public. Before we proceed, I want to take a moment to address the devastating wildfires that have been affecting parts of the Los Angeles area. Our thoughts remain with everyone who has been impacted by these fires, those who have lost homes, livelihoods, and cherished memories, as well as the brave firefighters who continue to battle the flames under these incredibly challenging conditions. In light of this tragedy, I feel it's important to acknowledge that Cal Water does not provide water service to the communities within the boundaries of the current fires. Additionally, it is my understanding that no Cal Water customer service has been affected by these fires. However, I do want to extend my sentiments to anyone here today who may have been impacted by the fires, whether directly or indirectly, whether you are a Cal Water customer, a Cal Water employee, a representative of one of the parties in this proceeding, an employee of the California Public Utilities Commission, or any other member of our California community. I recognize that you may have friends, family, or loved ones who have been affected. While the fires are not an issue in this application or in today's public participation hearing and have no bearing on our discussions, I felt it is important to pause and address this, not in my role as an administrative law judge, but as a human being and a fellow Californian. Together, we are a resilient community, and in times of hardship, we come together to support one another. Thank you for allowing me to take this brief moment of reflection. On a related note, Cal Water has provided the public with information about the water company's efforts to prepare for a significant emergency like the LA fires, emergencies that could impact water supply. If you would like to learn more information about Cal Water's emergency preparedness, you may visit the company's website at calwater.com. Once on the Cal Water website, you will see several menu categories near the top of the screen. If you place your cursor over the link titled Customer Care, and then click on the link titled Alert Center, then you can click on the link titled Information on Cal Water's Emergency Preparedness and LA Fire Relief Efforts. There you will find information that was posted a few days ago on January 15th that provides additional information. Again, the focus of today's public participation hearing is to hear directly from the public about Cal Waters' general rate case, but if you have specific questions regarding your bill or service, we do have Cal Water customer service representatives available to answer specific customer questions during this hearing. In addition, if you have specific questions regarding the application in this general rate case, we also have a separate number you can call. For those of you who can see us on the screen, there is a contact information for questions regarding the application. Contact is, the phone number is 408-367-8230. That's for Patrick Alexander, and that email address is also written on the screen. And for those of you who may have questions regarding your bill or service, there are two phone numbers on the screen. The first one is area code 530-433-6589, and the second phone number is area code 650-288-7875. I thank you for spending time with us this evening, whether you are sharing your thoughts on Cal Waters' general rate case application, or whether you are simply listening. The commissioner and I will be paying close attention to what you have to say. I also want to point out that we are also accepting written public comments through a forum on our website. For those of you who can see the screen, there is a link there on the left with information about how you can provide written comments. That specific web address is apps.cpuc.ca.gov/c/82407003. Another way to find the location for providing written comments, if you go to the commission's website, cpuc.ca.gov, on the top right-hand corner of the screen, you will find a search box. In that box, if you type in the number of this case, A2407003, then press enter or click on the search button, you will be directed to a new page showing your search results. The first item on that page is a link titled A2407003. Click on it, and you will be directed to the proceeding detail page for this proceeding, and at near the top, you will find a button titled Add Public Comment. If you click on that button and follow the directions, you will be able to submit a written comment that will be part of this proceeding. As many of you know, the California Public Utilities Commission has five commissioners who are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the state senate, including Commissioner Matthew Baker, who is the commissioner assigned to this proceeding. At the moment, I will turn it over to Commissioner Baker for a statement. Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Baker, I believe you are on mute. We're not able to hear you.
ALJ Rosas is the reporter. I cannot hear the commissioner either.
I'm going to go off the record. Commissioner Baker, we cannot hear you. And I'm making a statement for his advisors or staff if they can reach out to Commissioner Baker.
The feed for this streaming event is brought to you by AdminMonitor.com.
I am sorry, I was on mute, and that was my bad.
Will you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Commissioner Baker.
Okay, my bad. Thank you, Judge. I just want to second your remarks on the tragic fires in Southern California. My heart too goes out to the people who have experienced loss because of this catastrophe. Tonight, I am the signed commissioner for California Water Company's General Rate Case Application 24-07-003, which requests the authority to increase rates for water service to approximately half a million active connections to California customers. In this application, the California Water Company is requesting to increase collections by approximately $140 million for its customers across its rate-making regions in test year 2026, and increase collections elsewhere in its service territory by approximately $8 million, adjust its capital structure, and make other changes that will impact future customer bills. I take all rate increases requests very seriously, and the utility has the burden to prove their case. What a rate case is, is a time where the utility comes in to the commission, and as a monopoly utility, we have to approve what rates they are able to charge their customers and make sure they are just and reasonable. So the utility comes in and they propose their costs and their rates, and then through an adjudicated process, numerous parties, including the Public Advocates Office here at the commission, scrutinize the request line by line and put forward alternatives to the utility's case. The judge, Judge Rosa here, in this case adjudicates and creates a proposed decision about whether or not the utility has met the burden and should get all or part of what they're asking for. That alternative that he creates then must be approved, or it could be amended by the entire commission, or commissioners can actually draft an alternative to that commission, to that decision. So this is at the beginning of a process to decide whether or not this rate increase is just and reasonable. As I do for all general rate cases, I will evaluate this proposed rate increasing by balancing the public interest through a lens of affordability and maintaining a equitable, reliable utility service. I too will be following this discussion with great interest, and I look forward to working with all of you, as well as Judge Rosas, on the issues that are raised in this application. And I think public participation is really important, because while there is a process by which every line of this request is going to be scrutinized and argued over, it is very important to get the feel from the people who will be most impacted by this, pro or con. Thank you very much, Judge, and I'll turn it back over to you.
And thank you very much, Commissioner Baker. We will now hear from Cal Water, Patrick Alexander, who is a general rate case manager with Cal Water, give a brief presentation. Mr. Alexander, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Excellent. Good evening. My name is Patrick Alexander, and I'm the general rate case manager for California Water Service. On behalf of Cal Water, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide some opening remarks. I would like to begin by underscoring three things. Cal Water is committed to serving our customers' best interests. There's a significant need to maintain and improve the drinking water infrastructure in our service districts, and all parties involved, Cal Water, public advocates, and our customers, want the same thing at the end of this process: safe, reliable, and affordable water service. A low water bill is of little value if the water coming out of the tap is not safe for people to drink, if no water comes out of the tap at all, or if there's not adequate pressure when our firefighters need it. Water is such an important part of daily life that it's easy to overlook how it is delivered to our customers' homes, schools, or businesses. It takes an extensive network of water pipelines, treatment plants, wells, tanks, and pumps to ensure water quality, excuse me, water quality and reliability. We've seen the health and safety risks that can occur when infrastructure investment goes ignored. Reliable infrastructure is indispensable for providing safe, high-quality drinking water for customers' everyday needs and for ensuring enough water supply for firefighters to protect our communities when emergencies arise. Ideally, we wanted to be there in each of our service districts in person for these public participation hearings and to have the chance to interact with our customers directly. However, this hearing is for all of our districts. There are a very large number of infrastructure projects, so there is no way to address them all in today's hearing. Further, the proposed bill effects vary from service district to district, which is of most interest to our customers. We place district-specific information regarding our filing on our website at www-calwater.com/iip. Next slide, please. I would also like to take this opportunity to promote our conservation programs, which can help customers lower their water consumption and control their bills. Additional information for our programs can be found on our conservation page at www-calwater.com/conservation. Finally, we offer a customer assistance program for our qualifying low-income residential customers. More information on this program can be found on our customer assistance page at www-calwater.com/assistance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. We will now hear from the Public Advocates Office of the Commission, also known as Cal Advocates. Sarita Gibbs, who is a program and project supervisor, will give a brief presentation. Sarita Gibbs, whenever you're ready.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Good evening, everyone. Yes, so as Your Honor has suggested, I am here representing the Public Advocates Office. My name is Sarita Gibbs, and I'm the oversight supervisor for this, the Cal Water rate case, and just want to share a few minutes and a few slides with you all regarding our mission. So as you see here, our mission statement is to advocate for the lowest possible monthly bill for customers of California's regulated utilities consistent with safety, reliability, and the state's environmental goals. As the only state entity charged with this responsibility, the Public Advocates Office represents utility customer interest before the CPEC. Next slide, please. And so, following this slide with our mission statement, I just wanted to provide some contact information for the Public Advocates Office representatives for this proceeding. And first and foremost, the docket number, as ALJ Rosas mentioned, comments can be made or posted on that website, and then subsequent to that, the Public Advocates Office staff, there's a gentleman, Edward Scher, who is the project lead, and his number's listed here, and then myself, my number. I am, again, the oversight supervisor. And of most importance is the fact that the Cal Advocates will be filing its opening testimony in response to Cal Water's GRC application on next Tuesday, the 28th. So we are in the process of finalizing the testimony, which will be available and filed early next week. And then finally, there is a link to our website in the event that customers, if consumers have questions, they can reach out directly there. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarita Gibbs. We now turn to the public. As mentioned, the basic purpose of this evening's public participation hearing is to hear directly from you, from the customers, about Cal Waters' general rate case application. We are very appreciative that you have joined us this evening. If you want to speak, and if you have not already pressed *1, if you have not already called the number on the screen, 1-800-857-1917, if you have not already entered passcode 6032788 pound, and pressed *1, please do so now. This is your opportunity to let us know that you wish to speak so that we can add you on the queue and so that we can correctly allocate time to our speakers. If you don't join soon, but you call in later, we may have to reduce your allotted time for any speakers who join after the first round of speakers have been added to the queue. To ensure that we can hear you clearly, please speak directly into your phone or headset. It is best if you avoid using a speakerphone, and when you do speak, we ask that you speak slowly and clearly so that the stenographers can hear you. We want the stenographers to be able to transcribe everything that you say and to prepare an accurate written record of your comments. The stenographers are not going to interrupt you. If they don't understand you, or if your comments are unclear, muddled, the transcript will simply indicate that your comments were inaudible. It's in your best interest if you speak slowly and clearly, because it is important to the commissioner, it is important to me, that we have a clear and accurate transcript of the comments that you make this evening. When you start to speak, the first thing you should do is state your name, and please spell your last name. Additionally, identify the specific area you're calling about. We wanted to, we want to be able to connect the comments that you make to the specific Cal Water service area. So it is important for us to get a sense of what you're calling about. If you can identify the service area, it'll be very helpful. And with that said, again, if you want to make a statement, please let us know now. At the moment, I'm going to ask our operator, operator, how many individuals are in the queue ready to speak?
So, Your Honor, we currently have six individuals ready to make public comments.
Thank you, operator. Because we have six speakers identified to make public comment, we're going to allocate two minutes per speaker. A chime will sound when your time limit is finished. Operator, please proceed with our first public comment.
Our first public comment comes from...
Amy Shuklian, Tulare County Supervisor. Good evening, Judge Rosas and Commissioner Baker. My name is Amy Shuklian. That's S-H-U-K-L-I-A-N. I'm a Tulare County Supervisor whose district includes the city of Visalia. I'm also a former Visalia City Council member, lifelong Visalia resident, and a Cal Water customer. I am calling in support of Cal Water's request. Cal Water has made significant infrastructure needs in the community. They continue to invest in our infrastructure. They're replacing old water mains and wells. They're installing additional water treatment facilities and investing in infrastructure like fire hydrants, as you both mentioned earlier, which are an integral part of keeping our community safe. And we want and we need that in Visalia. We have had a good partner in Visalia with Cal Water. Our city is growing, and we want Cal Water to continue to do what is needed to provide water service to help facilitate that growth. Additionally, they help customers lower their water use and their water bills through their conservation programs, and I've known many people who have sought out Cal Water grants for landscape improvements and drought-tolerant landscaping. They help low-income customers with their customer assistance program and with penalty-free payment plans if they fall behind. And something that is found historically in Central Valley groundwater supplies are things like 123 TCP and PFAS, and these contaminants, they have worked to stay ahead of the curve on this water quality planning ahead to meet new regulations. So Cal Water has done a good job. I turn on my faucet in just a minute, and I know I will have good, quality drinking water coming out of the tap. It's well-run and well-maintained, and they are planning ahead for the needs of our growing city, and I support this proposal. Thank you.
Supervisor Shuklian, thank you very much for your comments. Operator, please announce the next public comment.
Our next public comment comes from Julian Canetti, California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Your line is open.
Thank you, and good evening, Your Honor and Commissioner. Julian Canetti, C-A-N-E-T-E, President and CEO of the California Hispanic Chambers of Commerce, and my comments in regards to Cal Water pertain to their statewide operations. The State Hispanic Chamber is one of the largest ethnic business organizations in California, representing over 125 Hispanic and diverse association members with over 950,000 Hispanic-owned businesses. As a chamber, we pride ourselves in our ability to connect business owners with the resources they need to continue doing business in California, and that's why we're here to speak about Cal Water. We are supportive of their request and their rate case, and they have been a steadfast partner of the chamber in many ways, both in direct service to our members, but also in support of our mission to develop the next generation of Hispanic leaders. When people talk about ways to help conserve water, they are primarily focused on individual customers, not commercial clients. More often than not, they are very, there are very few programs aimed at helping businesses conserve. Not only does California Water Service offer free conservation kits to businesses, they also have done multiple briefings and educational sessions for our members of the Hispanic Chambers throughout California to educate them about these resources, but also to answer questions from business owners who are wondering how else can they reduce their water bills. That kind of service is commendable, and part of the reason why we've enjoyed our partnership with Cal Water over the years. The second thing I wanted to highlight is their focus on the future and educating young people and others about the importance of quality water and delivering it in a safe manner so that everybody has quality water. Years ago, we established a path to success. We call it our CAPS program to help Hispanic college students gain access to new career pathways. We partnered with Cal Water specifically to educate them on the issue of water and the importance of quality... and the importance of quality water and delivery system that- and particularly, uh, Cal Water encourages them to get into the STEM field, um, which has been helpful for many of them. They provided guest speakers and experts to speak, uh, to our, our CAP students and our members, uh, which is, has been a huge help in showing the diverse career paths that these students can take. Again, thank you, um, for your time this evening.
And thank you, Julian Canetti, for your comments. Operator, please announce the next public comment.
Our next public comment comes from Justin Grant, San Carlos resident. Your line is open.
Uh, hello, uh, my name is Justin Grant. Uh, I am a resident of San Carlos, California, which is in the Bay Shore District. Um, I've been a, a, a resident of California for the last 15 years, within a few miles of where we live today. Uh, and our water increase from the last cycle was obscene. Uh, and it seems like we're going to see our rates double again, uh, because of the rate structures that are proposed by Cal Water for our district in particular. Um, to give an idea, uh, prior, uh, August, same amount of water from 23 to 24 saw a 70% increase in our overall bill. We have a large family, uh, and, you know, our baseline water usage is, while reasonable and in a new home with water-efficient appliances, uh, well above the average that Cal Water, uh, proposes, uh, is normal there. If I lived in Atherton or in, um, other neighboring cities, I would be paying less than a third despite them also being Cal Water, uh, provided in a separate district. There's something wrong here with the way these rate structures have been built, uh, overall. If, uh, the rates go through as proposed, I'll be paying $50 per CCF, order of magnitude, I'd be spending over $1,000 a month on water for a family of six. That's obscene. Uh, if we, I lived across the street in the city of Belmont, I would be paying certainly less than half of that, even with their upcoming rate increases. Uh, I, I think that this deserves significant scrutiny, uh, and is a structural problem with the way Cal Water has designed its rate structure. Thank you for, uh, uh, hearing me.
And thank you, Justice Grant, for your comments. Operator, please announce the next public comment.
Our next public comment comes from-
From mine.
Your line is open. Hi there, your line's open.
Yeah, Speaker, Speaker, can you say your name?
And I live in six area code, sorry, zip code. Um, I'm speaking against the increase, um, because it's already higher than, um, residents in the Bakersfield area. Um, my wife lives in the city of Bakersfield, and her, uh, I have one bill from her. It's, um, it was for 69 CCF, and she paid $115 for that bill, while mine at the same month was 43 and 200. So, um, there's already a huge discrepancy, uh, against other users. Um, so any more increase would be, you know, even, even worse than that, and that's all I have to say.
Speaker, if you're still on the line, can you just, uh, spell your name once again? We were not able to get that name.
Sure. K-H-O-A-M-A-I.
Thank you very much for your comment. Operator, please announce the next public comment.
Our next public comment comes from Jose Iglesias. Your line is open.
Great. Um, thank you very much for this hearing. My name is Jose Iglesias, and my last name is spelled I-G-L-E-S, like in Sam, I-A-S. I live in Portola Valley, and I'm part of the Bear Gulch Water District. My question really relates to, is Cal Water learning from the LA fires' experiences? And what I'm thinking of, you know, Portola Valley is right on the wildfire, wildlife urban interface, and I want to know if they have gone through and figured out whether the backup pumps for the different storage tanks, water tanks have the capability to operate without electricity, the size of the water tanks, the fire hydrant coverage, working alongside the Woodside Fire, and the water main size to feed all the tanks, et cetera, et cetera. Whether the business included into the rate increase or not, it needs to be figured out, and Cal Water needs to go through and, um, analyze and observe and, and figure out how can we learn from this disaster happening in Southern California, um, to be able to harden our infrastructure in the Cal Water District, especially along the wildlife urban interface of places like Portola Valley, to ensure that we can fight a fire, you know, if it were to happen, like it did in 2020 with the CCU fire, um, to make sure that we had the best ability to help the fire department go through and fight the fires. Thank you very much, and I look forward to figuring out what is included in Cal Water's efforts, both in their current budget as well as their proposed budget. Thank you.
And thank you, Jose Iglesias, for your comments. Operator, will you please announce the next public comment?
Our next public comment comes from Joanne Treffser, San Carlos resident. Your line is open.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Treffser. Last name is T-R-E-F, as in Frank, C-E-R. And I'm calling to totally oppose the rate that Cal Water is asking increased in San Carlos, California. It's beyond ridiculous. We are in a, in with the city of San Carlos, San Mateo, we're 30,000, and they're 120, in South City, which is 60. Makes no sense. So we're being the smallest, we're paying for all the infrastructure for the other two cities involved with our particular plan. My bill went from $100 to $600. And apparently, it all was the increase that was prior, that never was, people were not notified correctly. There is a total lack of transparency when Cal Water sends out these notices. If you read them, it'll say, hey, if you, in tier one, guess what, you're getting a big discount. That's so inaccurate, because you go from tier on up, and your money just is increasing incredibly at a ridiculous high rate, and they added another tier, which no one even told anyone about. Meters are not being read. Besides not being read, then when they are read, they're read sometimes 36 days, sometimes 37. So your bill is automatically going to the higher rate. So they've jumped it, because they don't have, they have five readers, meter readers, in the area of San Carlos, or for our city. So those five people, and if they can't get to you on 30 days, they're into 35, well, then you're paying, you're paying, you've just jumped to another tier. We are more expensive than our very, very rich, rich, rich friends, who, congratulations to them, but that live in Hillsborough, Atherton, Portola Valley, and Woodside. They require a whole lot more infrastructure to their properties that are minimum three acres in some of our, in some of those areas, minimum of three acres, and they're paying 50% less. Thank you.
And thank you, Joanne Treffser, for your comment. Operator, please announce the next public comment.
Our next public comment comes from Giovanni Alacalla. Your line is open.
Hi, uh, my name's Giovanni Alacalla. I am from Salinas, California, which is located in Monterey County. I operate a very small, um, professional service business, so we don't have a lot of foot traffic. We only have one bathroom in our small office. Uh, we probably consume between 30 and 50 gallons a month. Uh, my bill with Cal Water in 2024 went from 155 a month to 267 a month, without any reading of any water. Uh, I, like many others on this call, do oppose this increase and any future increases, increases to this, because realistically, this is hurting a lot of people, both residential and on the business side. I only have one bathroom, and it went up 74% last year. And now you guys and the CPUC want to increase it more. It's unacceptable, and I really do not, uh, think that is a good idea, both economically and, and for anybody at this moment. Thank you.
And thank you, Giovanni Alacalla, for your comment. Operator, please announce the next public comment.
Your Honor, I have no additional public comments at this time.
Thank you, operator. For those of you who are listening who are considering making a public comment, please let us know now. Call the number, enter the code, press star one.
Our next public comment comes from-
Name not recorded.
One moment.
Erica Bajorcas, resident.
Your line is open.
Hi, um, my name is Erica, and I've been listening to this, this is like, I just opened this letter, and I saw that you guys were having this, so I jumped on, and I just don't understand why you can't read the room and understand that we are barely keeping our heads above water as it, like, as it is now. I just, I don't understand where we're supposed to get this money from. I, I understand, you know, investing in infrastructure. Um, again, I'm totally new. I don't even know if there's any profit in this company or if it's just a service, so you guys are operating at a loss. I just don't think that we can keep bearing the brunt of these increases. It's, I feel like it's impossible. And I'm desperately, desperately asking you to listen to those of us who are saying we can't afford it. Um, there has to be some other way, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Erica, and can you provide us with your last name, please?
Bajorcas, B-O-J-O-